Okay, good morning, GPAR. This is Matt Braden from the GPAR professional staff. So happy to be here for a coffee talk, our first one after Labor Day. Everybody's kind of getting back into the regular groove and the task at hand and work ahead of us, including Philadelphia City Council. Before we get into our actual coffee talk, we're going to look ahead to Friday. We have another coffee talk with another council member. That's going to be Councilman Brian O'Neil up in the 10th District. He has been with us in the past and he's been a longtime supporter of a lot of things that we are advancing in City Council. So we're very fortunate to have him with us Friday with Roderick as well. So hopefully you'll be with us again at nine o'clock. Looking forward to next week, we are going to have a safety webinar with Tracy, the safety lady. She'd be really good. It's going to get into AI, deep fakes, cybercrime, a whole bunch of stuff if it relates to the work that you do day in and day out, and the things that you should be thinking about to protect you and your clients and to raise your level of awareness and professionalism doing your work every single day. So remember, September is Realtor Safety Month, and we're going to have some more program in addition to what's happening. I'm sorry, that's not next week, that's the following week. Next week, we're going to have a personal safety one with self-defense expert Nick DeRas. So hopefully you can join us for that. Sorry, getting ahead of myself. All right, well enough of that. Let's get into the coffee talk today. Let's welcome our president, Roderick Walker. Good morning, Roderick.
Morning, Matt. Good morning, GPAR. Good morning, associate members, and good morning, City Councilman Mike Driscoll. Thanks for being with us, Mike. I appreciate you taking the time out of your schedule to spend some time with us this morning and welcome you back to Philadelphia from Harrisburg. And so, Mike, Councilman Driscoll, if you could take some time this minute, this morning, and just introduce yourself and tell us what district you're in and where do you call home in the city of Philadelphia? We could start with that. Thank you.
Well, Roderick, thanks for having me. For those of you who don't know, our convicted killer has been apprehended.
We're having some technical problems here?
Think so.
All right, let's just hold on for one sec. See if we get the councilman back in here.
All right. Can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Okay, yeah, I'm not aware where I got cut off. I was telling your audience there that the convicted killer has been apprehended and is on his way back to jail. So let's start off with some good news and some safety for adjoining counties. So yeah, so I'm Mike Driscoll. I represent the Sixth Councilmatic District. And so essentially, I represent from Bucks County. I hug the Delaware River down to Allegheny Avenue. And I go from the river west until the northeast corner of Kensington and Allegheny. And then in the northern end, I go from the Boulevard, from the river out to the Roosevelt Boulevard. So it's a pretty sizable geography here in the city. But it also presents a lot of opportunities for me to do some economic development along the river and along the Roosevelt Boulevard and in Bridesburg and Port Richmond areas of the city of Philadelphia. A little background on me, for those of you who don't know me, I served eight years in the Pennsylvania House of Representatives prior to filling an unexpired term here in City Council, which will end at the end of December this year. I'm likely to get reelected in November because I don't have an opponent on the ballot. So that would then put me in this position for the next four years, God willing. And I look forward to working with your organization to tackle some of the big issues we have here in the city of Philadelphia.
Thanks, Councilman. Thanks for sharing that. And how long specifically have you served at council now? I believe from my account, it looks like just over 12 months. I believe you were installed June 22?
It was June 22, so I guess I'm in the 14th or 15th month. Although I have participated in two budgets. I was sworn in on June 10th in the middle of budget negotiations in that big budget of 2022. And I was able to, you know, put a little bit of my imprint on that budget, which I'm proud of.
And in regards to the council, what committees do you sit on and chair?
So currently, I am the Chairman of License and Inspection. And our big challenge there is to bring the workforce complement back to where it was at one time. We are having some difficulty filling positions here in the city of Philadelphia, not only in License and Inspection, but in the Police Department and in the prison system. So I think we need to do a better job of recruiting and perhaps a better business model for salary and compensation to get our workforce where we need it to be. The money has been allocated for these positions. It's just we're having a difficult time getting them. So Chair Bell and I, and I'm also a gas commissioner.
Thanks for sharing that. Councilman, public safety and quality of life are major issues for the city of Philadelphia. And can you speak to strategies that your office in City Hall is employing to make the city safer and to improve the quality of life for the citizens here in Philadelphia?
Well, I think you hit the nail on the head, Roderick. That quality of life is, public safety and quality of life are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10 on my list. I know there's a sense of, and I think it was exasperated, a sense of lawlessness out there right now that, you know, the rules don't matter. And 25 miles an hour on Frankfurt Avenue doesn't mean 25 miles an hour for a lot of people. We have drifting donuts being done on the streets of Philadelphia. So I introduced a bill back in the spring, which I'm happy to tell you was passed unanimously to seize those vehicles and/or find those perpetrators $2,000. We're hoping now the council's back that the mayor signs it this week or next week so we can cement that in law and give the tools to law enforcement to bring that quality of life issue under control. There was another problem that I found out about last year when I first got sworn in. I was getting calls about boom parties. And you all know what a boom party is. I found out pretty quickly. It's folks through social media and through the internet gather in a certain spot, and then they assemble some huge speakers and have these parties that get out of control sound-wise that disturb different neighborhoods at different times of the day and night to the extent where I was getting more phone calls from New Jersey than I was from Pennsylvania on how loud things were. So similarly to our drifting bill, we also passed a bill that we can now seize those vehicles and/or $2,000 fine once the mayor signs that. So, you know, we are trying to address this legislatively. But I will tell you, at the end of the day, it's all about enforcement. We can put as many good laws on the books as we can, but we have to have the will and the enforcement with the Police Department and the leadership in City Hall to actually send a message that we're not going to tolerate this behavior in Philadelphia.
Thank you. From a macro level, what are the strategies that your office see or have talked about strategically to make the city safer and to improve the quality of life? And to your point, some of those comments about the quality of life not being as good as it is are exacerbated. But from a high macro level, can you speak to some strategic plans and strategies that your office in City Hall tend to employ to just improve those two characteristics for the city?
Yeah, I think getting a full complement of police officers. We're down about 1,500 police officers in the city of Philadelphia. We did put in the budget of 2022 and in the budget of 2023, you know, 300 new police officers in each of those budgets. So that'd be a total of 600 police officers. That's the good news. The bad news is, we've been trying to recruit for the last year to get police officers into our academy here. And quite honestly, we're having a difficult time doing it. Now, we do have a class now. We're going to get several hundred on the street, but that's not enough. So continuing to fund that and looking at what that package looks like for these police officers and the support of these police officers. They're afraid to come in and make a mistake and not get the support of their leadership in the Police Department. So we really have to change the culture, I believe, in the Police Department so we can get these officers on the street so we can enforce the laws that are on the books. That's one thing. Secondly, I think we need, and we have funded, cameras that we're going to be putting near recreation centers and high intersection, volume intersections, areas where we have illegal dumping. You know, we're going to try and identify those vehicles and find the vehicle itself. And then lighting is important. You're going to see all throughout the city of Philadelphia, we are changing every light bulb on every street in the city of Philadelphia. And we're actually going to ask the neighbors to come out and tell us what level of lighting they feel most comfortable with. So we're really happy about funding that program and getting that started.
No, lighting is good. I think those are some good initiatives to implement here in the city. Thank you. Look, you talk about recruiting, and I think that goes across the board in the city of Philadelphia. And to that point, in that space, coming back after COVID, right? We're a few years beyond that. And so from your lens, what are some things that the city and some of our employers should look at? Some, you know, maybe some of the big institutions in the city to bring peoples back to the city to make it vibrant and to get, you know, again, past the days of COVID. You know, I know FDA's, some new boost is coming out, I think, this week. And so what does that look like in your space? And how do you see the city playing a role in getting people back into the city to create the vibrancy that we had pre-COVID?
Well, the city has to lead, and Mayor Kenny has instructed, I believe, all of his departments that effective October 1st, he's expecting everyone back to their jobs in City Hall or the surrounding buildings in Center City where feasible. You know, not to say what we learned during COVID that you can have, like we're having today, a Zoom meeting or, you know, those type of things. I'm not saying those things are bad. I think they're wonderful. But we also need the presence of the actual people downtown. Comcast is telling their employees at least four days a week. I think the other big employers in Center City ought to follow that. But then we have a job as public officials to make sure people feel safe downtown. You know, this aggressive panhandling, it's deterring folks from wanting to come downtown. I know folks in the suburbs that used to come to the opera and to the plays downtown that now tell me that they don't feel safe. Well, we got to get those people, their mindset that it's okay to come back because it is safe. And until we do that, we're not going to get it. So it's going to have to be public and private sector partnership to get everybody back and everybody feeling safe so that we can patronize the wonderful restaurants that we have and we can get back to the theater and we can get back to, you know, activities that Center City so vibrant presents.
Thanks. And also, in that space, you talked about the boom parties. The National Retail Federation came out with some data last week about shrinkage with our retailers in regards to laws from, I think they're calling it mob theft and things like that. From a macro level, can you talk about plans that the city has to help protect the retailers from those type of retail theft shrinkers? Because again, those elements contribute to, you know, major losses for the retailer. You know, recent closing of some of our shops, Wawa and the like in the city of Philadelphia. What are your thoughts there, if you have an opinion about that?
Well, I think it's a combination. I think we have to have a zero tolerance policy on retail theft. You know, there's this notion that you can steal up to $500 and you're not going to get prosecuted. Well, that's hogwash. I mean, you know, we start letting that happen, you know, it's just going to continue and get worse. You know, the district attorney has to be able to prosecute petty theft because the police are tired of arresting folks and they just get let free right away. So they wind up not even arresting them anymore, and it just exasperates. And then these small businesses that you're referring to, they're taking losses. We saw what happened with Wawa.
Right.
You know, Wawa closed how many downtown, right? I love Wawa. I go to Wawa every day for my coffee.
Have to get a shorty, right?
I don't want them closing anymore. I need that 16-ounce cup of coffee in the morning. So yeah, I think we have to enforce, and then we have to work with the district attorney to make sure that he punishes. Look, I'm not saying you throw somebody away in jail for the rest of their life for, you know, stealing a, you know, a cup of coffee, but we do have to deter that kind of behavior.
No, thank you. Appreciate that. And moving into the real estate space, Philadelphia and the nation has a housing shortage. I think nationally, we're about 7 million homes short in the housing stock. And the city last year announced a turnkey program to help support the development of single-family homes for those who are in need. And the turnkey program is projected to build 1,000 single-family homes for folks who are at about 80% median income. How's that program working? And what are your thoughts, higher level, about that program in the space where, you know, we need to provide more affordable, clean, safe, and decent housing for the citizen here in Philadelphia? Can you speak to that?
Yeah, I'm a big supporter of the turnkey program. I mean, we definitely need affordable housing in this city. Otherwise, we're going to have a lot of unhoused folks and really create more of a problem in our streets of Philadelphia. But I'll tell you this, it's not just the, it's not just a low-income problem. What I'm seeing in my district right now is I have a lot of seniors, 55 and older communities.
Right.
And look, I know it's, your guys are in the real estate business and, you know, it's capitalism and the marketplace, all that kind of stuff. But the fear that I'm hearing from, you know, middle-class folks that have worked their entire life that are renting in some of these 55 and older communities, some of the pricing has been going up the last couple of years. And the fear they're saying to me is their income versus where they see the prices headed, they're very fearful that they're not going to be able to make ends meet. So I don't know the answer to that question. I kind of look to your community to help us as best we can, you know, be good corporate citizens. But also, you know, I'm a capitalist, you know, I get it. So I do worry about that aspect of it. But with regard to the affordable housing, you know, we need to use the city assets that we have and pledge them into this program to make sure it's affordable, to build affordable housing so that it makes sense for the builder and continues to make sense for the folks that need that housing. So, you know, my policies will be support the next mayor in whatever he or she needs to continue this turnkey program.
No, thanks for sharing it. And you're right, there is that community of 55 and older who will look for sustainable housing. And I think there's a number of ways of doing it, the turnkey program along with a combination of some low-income housing tax credits, maybe some new market things that will bring inventory into those neighborhoods and for those Philadelphia folks who are looking for that type of living as well. So thanks for sharing that. Sprinkle legislation, you know, Councilman Squillill introduced legislation that would mandate sprinklers and certain residential structures, including retrofitting some of the existing properties. What are the financial, if you can speak to financial application of that? And how much support is there on council for that legislation? If you could speak to that?
Yeah, I mean, look, public safety is paramount to our jobs as public officials. But you can't just turn it on overnight and expect the folks to be able to afford to retrofit where appropriate. We're actually seeing examples right now of new construction where some of the developers are not following the city code with regard to installation of sprinklers. So in a macro sense, I'm very concerned about sprinklers all over the city in new construction and in renovations. But we also have to be mindful of, can it be financed? What we can do to help offset some costs, whether it be tax incentives, long-term financing, better interest rates, and the like. So I am anxious to hear more from Councilman Squillill, who introduced the bill, on how he sees this moving forward. Because in these next three months, it could come up for a vote.
Thank you. Thanks for sharing that. Taxes. Philadelphia has the nation's highest wage taxes. And standalone, and how it taxes businesses' income. This directly relates to business calling the city of Philadelphia home. What should we do? And where do we need substantive changes in our tax structure to support those businesses who want to call the city home? Any thoughts there?
Yeah, I do have some thought there. And I alluded earlier in the call that I was involved in 2022's budget negotiations. And we met with the diverse chambers to hear from them on what they thought about the tax structure. And they were unanimous in saying that we need to send a signal to their small businesses that we're moving in the right direction. So in 2022, we lowered the BIRT tax and the wage tax. Not a lot, but we lowered it. We did the same thing again in this past budget. I was pushing for a little bit more than we got. I had worked with the regular Chamber of Commerce. We have in the city put up these, along with the diverse chambers. And we were able to pass two consecutive budgets of reductions in those areas. I think that sends a message to those that want to come to Philadelphia that we are moving in the right direction. And the more big business comes to Philadelphia, I think we're going to be able to expand that tax base so that we can continue those tax cuts. And that's a strong message we have to continue to send. There's a huge insurance company that just picked us as their home. Trying to think of the name of it. You guys might know the name of it. Right here in the Parkway, they're building and expanding.
Matt, do you know what that is? Brittany, do you know what that is? No? Okay.
Yeah, we'll get that for you.
We'll get it.
For your members. But I thought that was a great signal for the city that they could have went anywhere and they chose here. You know, we also have some great anecdotal stories down in the Navy Yard. In my district, I have Honor Foods is expanding. We have, we just worked with Morris Iron and Steel to provide funding to restore a dock. We haven't had commerce on the river in northeast Philadelphia from a pier in over 50 years. But we now have an operating pier in northeast Philadelphia that is taking their product down south. And now they're trying to figure out ways to make it economic, to bring stuff back up this way. So I am hearing good stories from small businesses that do think we are headed in the right direction. So it's like the tale of two cities, right? So you turn on the news and you see the shootings and the killings, and it's all real. But at the same time, I'm out with the business community, and I'm hearing success stories, you know, one after the other of why Philadelphia is a great place to do business.
No, good. Thanks for sharing that. And our sports teams help to promote that. So that's always good stuff. Rental properties, and rental properties is a huge focus in City Council this year and last year, including rent control. Do you have a position on rent control? What are your thoughts there?
I mean, just the notion of the word rent control kind of scares me. I certainly don't want to send that message to the realtor community that, you know, we're going to tell you how to do your business. So I need to wrap my hands around that a little bit more to kind of understand it better and, you know, see what we can do to incentivize the real estate community to keep affordable housing. Oh, Chubb. Chubb's the big insurance company.
Okay.
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Tom. There you go. Councilman, again, we want to thank you for your time. We're going to, you know, we'll start wrapping up. But I'd like to start wrapping up by asking you, what are your goals, your legislative goals for the fall session? Would you mind sharing them with us?
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to share that with you. Couple of things here. I have, I had passed an ordinance back in the spring to create a task force to review the regulations and the operating procedures of license and inspection. And effective this month, we have, through the mayor and council president, we've appointed an 11-member task force to create a living, working document to put on the next mayor's desk and the next council president's desk on ways that we can improve license and inspection because it's such a critical agency in this city for development, renovation. And we can do better. So I'm really excited about that very talented task force that we're going to have assembled and have that document that we can share at the end of the year. I'm also going to have hearings on expanding the subway up to Roosevelt Boulevard into Bucks County, all the way to Neshamani Mall. So we've had discussions with SEPTA, we've had discussions with the Department of Transportation. We expect to have some conversations with the Turnpike Commission so that we can figure out a way to tap into those federal dollars that are there that other states and other cities are trying to get. I want Philadelphia to get those dollars. And so we're going to have some robust conversations around the high-speed rail through the Northeast.
Thank you. Thank you. Those are good, aggressive goals that you have coming out of your office. You talk about the task force for LNI. If you could speak to one or two big buckets where you see a need for change, what do they look like? And what outcomes do you envision from LNI with the new change?
I'm glad you asked that because I don't really know all the best ways to improve LNI, right? So that's why we formed this task force. So we have some really talented men and women, and it's a diverse membership on this. We want to hear from them. So they're members of the construction industry. They're members of DC 33, members of DC 41, no, 47, members of the Building Trades. We have all these different voices that are going to be in this room. And we're going to hash out what they think LNI needs and what their experience in real life has been dealing with LNI and how they think we can get better. And then we've also hired some really talented interns that are going to look at other jurisdictions throughout the United States on how they do business. And hopefully, we can have this document that won't be a final product at the end of December, but it'll be a living document that we can continue to improve next year and the year after so that at the end of the day, we have, you know, a more perfect LNI.
Good. Thank you. Thank you for that. Good. Thank you. Thank you for that. When you talk about a more robust city of Philadelphia, strong leadership. What are some, one or two positive items you'd like to see the city implore to continue to have, have a thriving city of Philadelphia for the next one hundred years, Councilman?
So I've been highlighting on my calendar with my staff, July fourth of twenty twenty-six. July fourth of twenty twenty-six will be the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of America. We're, Philadelphia will be on the world stage. We, we have federal funding. And we want to have a very healthy Philadelphia for tourists, tourists to come here and celebrate democracy. We already booked the FIFA World Cup in twenty twenty-six. We booked the Major League Baseball All-Star Game. We have a big golf tournament coming to the suburbs that year. So we have things that are definitely going to be here. Now we have to work on the homeless situation in Center City, the public safety issues in Center City and the support of the small businesses, as you alluded to earlier, getting people back down to work. So that as we advance our agenda for twenty twenty-six, it all comes together. Because if we do it right in twenty twenty-six, I think we're going to send a message for the next twenty years that Philadelphia is a good place to come and do business. Philadelphia is a good place to come visit. Come see our, our sports teams, come to our restaurants, come see our historic sites. But we're not going to be able to do that unless people feel safe. And so that's, that's what I'll be working on.
Great, great. Thanks for sharing that. That's good stuff. I'll start to wrap up by asking you, what's keeping you busy these days in the council? And on a personal side, with your family, I know you're back in the city from Harrisburg. So what's keeping you busy these days?
On any given day, it, it changes. I, I had, I had a big agenda for, for the third, the second week in June. And then I woke up to the announcement that I ninety-five collapsed in my district. So I was working on that for the next twelve days. Then I had a prison break. And then I had a PGW explosion in houses in my district. So no matter what I have on my calendar, it's probably going to get interrupted. But what, what I think we, we do have is, is to make sure in this, because this is the end of the, the session of, of the from twenty twenty to twenty, wait a minute, twenty, yeah, twenty twenty through the end of twenty twenty-three. The, the session ends. So everything will have to begin anew next year. I'm going to make sure we tidy up the loose ends of, of whatever we need to do between now and December.
Yeah, and a great job with ninety-five. I was on it about a week ago. So it's, it's coming along amazingly well. Great team of workers out there putting back together. So thank you and, and the governor for staying on top of that. Because it wasn't
I tell you, that, that, that told me that when we walk, work together, Philadelphia and Pennsylvania can do big things. And that's what I want to do in twenty twenty-six. I want to do big things in twenty twenty-six.
Awesome. Thank you. We appreciate you, Tom. A couple, couple of rapid fire questions. Football, here we go. Eagles or Steelers? I know you spent some time in, in Harrisburg, Eagle, Eagle, coming, and it's Pittsburgh. But so is
Okay, let me answer that. One hundred percent Eagles, but how bad an Eagles, Steelers, Super Bowl?
There you go. I like it. I like it. I like that one. I like that one. Hey, 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 is Matt still on with us? Matt, Matt may, may have stepped out, but Brittany, do you want to open up for questions?
Yeah, why don't we go ahead and open it for questions? I don't see too many in the chat here. Okay, so we have one. Is there any discussion about making the variance process quicker? Right now it's taking nine to twelve months to get through the process.
So variance through the zoning?
Yep.
Okay, yeah, I, I think that's, that's got to be a priority too. The, the zoning board got backed up, as you know, through COVID and has been trying to get out of that. Yeah, that, that timeframe doesn't work. So whatever we need to do to help the zoning board to get to these things quicker. And maybe that helps something to come out of the task force that I formed.
I don't see too many more questions. If anybody else has a question in the chat here, throw it into the chat and I'll, I'll read it out to, to the group. But I wanted to just kind of also put a pitch in here for some resources that are available through our association. We do have grants through the National Association of Realtors, through their community outreach program. And these provide like grants for park renovations, new dog parks, walking trails. I know there's been a lot, there's a lot of that going on throughout the city of Philadelphia, which is great because I think those public spaces are so important. So if there's anything in the sixth district that you, you know, see on the horizon that could use some additional funding or some collaboration, public-private partnership type of situation, please feel free to reach out to the Realtors and we'll take a look at the, the project and see if we can get some additional grant funding through twenty twenty-four.
That's wonderful. We, we, I think of one immediately. Riverfront North is, is a nonprofit that is connecting a trail along the Delaware River from Bucks County to Allegheny Avenue. And we're always looking for funding up to. So I will share that with Riverfront North.
Perfect. Yeah, just have your staff get in contact with me so I can get some details and then we'll, we'll kind of take a look and see if that fits the parameters of the grant application for you. We do have a question that just came into the chat. What are we doing to regulate illegal Airbnb, which are nuisances to the neighborhoods?
Yeah, so Councilman Isaiah Thomas has an ordinance, a legislation that we're, we're considering. We'll be addressing that this fall, I'm sure, because we have to get a handle on that. There's, there's the good operators and there's the bad operators and we have to, we have to figure that out.
Yep. Okay, perfect.
We'll highlight that this fall. Whoever asked that, thank you. We, we, we need to really look at that.
Okay, great, great. Well, I don't see many more questions in the chat here. So I'm going to kind of wrap up here. Thank you so much, Radrick, for taking the time today to kind of moderate and, and pose these questions to Councilman Driscoll. Councilman Driscoll, thank you so much. Oh, before I head off, one more question just came in. Will Philadelphia readjust real estate tax? Some assessment values are excessive.
Well, I mean, we have the appellate process. So I think, you know, I personally have a, I'm going through that myself on a, on a piece of property in Northeast Philadelphia. It was just a vacant piece of land that of a sudden, the taxes went up like a hundred percent. So yeah, I think you guys got to go through the appellate process and make your argument.
All right, wonderful. Again, thank you both, Councilman Driscoll, for taking some time. And we wish you all the best as you head into the new, the fall session here to round out the end of the year. Please keep in touch with us and always feel free to reach out, you know, with, with any questions or projects that you want, you know, our, our input or, or collaboration with. Again, all members of GPAR, please remember that it is Realtor Safety Month. And we do have another coffee talk coming up this Friday with Councilman Brian O'Neil. That will be at nine AM. So please check your emails for that link and please join us. And then for Realtor Safety Month, we do have the Realtor Safety Month webinar on self-safety defensive tactics. That is Thursday, September twenty-first. Again, all of this information you will find in your, your inbox. So stay tuned. Thank you guys both so much and enjoy the rest of your day.
You're welcome, Councilman. Thank you for your time. We appreciate you spending time with us this morning.
My pleasure. Go Eagles, go Phillies.
There you go. Go Eagles, go Phillies. Brittany, thank you.
Absolutely.
Bye now. See you soon.